City Council meeting in four committee meetings. Planning and Development Committee, Transportation Committee, Finance Personnel Committee, City and Safety Services Committee. And the mayor has just given us a few more things to discuss, so we will discuss them. So we're going to begin. By the way, especially council members, you're going to notice that our sound system is kind of strange because we're trying to make it more audible to the audience. We've had some complaints. People in the audience and people watching us on TV. So we're trying out some new systems here. So we're going to start with our Planning and Development Committee member Fall, Chris Fall, about that discussion.
Okay. Thank you. What's happened? Again. And last week, we had a discussion, and people didn't like the wording. So I went back and worked with the wording to try to make it more defined so that everybody understands what we mean, given the garbage situation. So this is the Proposed Ordinance 8914, and it was saying things it had said from the plane of the front of the house and this and that. And we talked about waivers, and we talked about how it should, you know, what we were trying to do. So I tried to just put it into kind of legislatees, plantees. So how it reads now is, Section A, "No householder or commercial operator shall permit to accumulate on the premises any solid waste except in containers provided by the householder," Athens City pursuant to Section 50505, "or commercial operator. All solid waste and recyclables, as defined in Section 50501, shall be kept in containers stored out of view or screened from view from any public right-of-way. Under no circumstances shall containers be stored in the front of the yard of a residence unless containers fully concealed from view by solid fencing or other adequate and appropriate screening, except for when the containers are at the curbside for pickup." And then we increased the fines accordingly. There are administrative fines. There is a, I'd like to comment, the fines, the cities that we found that did do this sort of thing in Ohio, ours are administrative fines. Those are, it's actually a criminal offense in Dublin. This would be a criminal offense, misdemeanor criminal offense. So we obviously do not want to go there. So basically, what was removed was the waiver system, because we've given people the opportunity to, if they do put it in the front yard because of topographical unpleasantries of their piece of property, it gives them the opportunity to be able to screen it, either through landscaping or through hardscaping. And, you know, it's fully concealed and from public, you know, public right-of-way. So that means from, you know, side streets, front streets. Trying to make it as straightforward as possible. So that's what I came up with, trying to guide the implementation of this and, you know, set it in motion to be able to go forward with it. Discussion?
I have a question. Householder is the owner of the home.
When you look at the definition, definitions are not included with this piece of paper, but the definition's under 500. It's the householder and commercial, and it has a broad definition, not only occupant but owner.
So it's owner or occupant?
It's, the householder is defined as the homeowner, occupant.
Okay.
The idea, I think, here is that anybody who has to do physical modifications upon the house is going to be the homeowner, putting up a fence, putting in some plantation. The people who are taking the garbage in and out are responsible for taking the garbage out of the concealed spot to the curb and making sure it doesn't fly away, and then putting it back. And so, you know, it's kind of a team effort. However, if the rental permit people are going around and doing a rental permit inspection, and they see that there is nothing, the garbage cans do not have any place that's concealed from, stored out of view or screened from view from any public right-of-way, they can make note of it and tell the person who's getting the permit that they have to deal with this instance.
So in our conversation last week, we talked about a run-up period for educational purposes.
Right.
And starting January 1st.
So that's still in there, yeah.
So my question is, if that is not done, who is cited? Let's say that the cans are still at the front of the house. Is it the landowner, the householder, or the resident?
Well, as it stands now, it'd be a violation put onto the garbage to the utility bills. As it is now.
And if it's a situation of needing to be screened, again, we're talking about the landowner needing to do that. So you would hope that the tenants would not be given the fine?
Well, I guess one of the things is that you would hope that this wouldn't have had to be done at all, because everybody wants to have a clean and safe city. Secondly, it gives us plenty of time, short of, I don't feel comfortable rewriting a whole ordinance so that landlords are given all this special treatment to get their property in, you know.
Compliance?
Yeah. And so, you know, I guess the first round could be, you know, kind of warnings, and that's a kind of an administrative sort of process. How do you try to inform people? I mean, on one level, it's the, I'm sure that most people who live in houses would like to be able to deal with their garbage in a clean and safe way. Nobody wants to live with a garbage can that's sitting there out in front. That's not pleasant for anybody, you know, nor whoever lives in the house, so.
I have a clarifying question. Do alleyways constitute public right-of-way?
If it's a street?
No, an alley.
Well, probably if it has a right-of-way with it, yeah. This is trying to get past the waiver issue that seemed to be such a problem with everybody of trying to determine who gets a waiver and why they get a waiver, and that there's too much wiggle room in allowing waivers. This is how the other ordinances in the state, the other towns in the state, and other towns across the nation have it, is that, you know, you can screen it, you know, some require it to be in a garbage can or a secondary accessory building, so.
You did look at other cities in Ohio and then across the country.
So to build on Jennifer's question then about the right-of-way and the instances we talked about over the last few weeks. In the case of Councilmember Butler's property that faces two streets, it's visible from both streets, that's a situation where it would be considered a right-of-way. And so, from either side, so that'll need to be dealt with. In the case where Councilmember Fall, I think you had said you've got one that faces your alley, your backside. Does it face on this?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you'll have a situation where you'll be needing to deal with it. There'll be other people in our neighborhoods, I think, I don't know if I share with you, you know, some people have their garbage cans, you know, by their garage door or at the end of their carport where it might be blocked during the day from sight, but people are going to need, I guess, I think, as we educate people, rethink that and understand that when your car is gone during the day, your trash can and your recycling container are visible, so they'll probably need to just rethink those kind of storage areas.
I think one of the things that we're running into is trying to craft legislation that balances, you know, the people who are trying, who put it down at the end of their drive, though, you know, if you get your binoculars out, you can still see it from right-of-way. To those people who just don't have any place to put it, but the, it's just kind of put outside and the garbage is overflowing, and we have other ordinances that have been dealing with that, and that it's an attractive nuisance, it's not conducive to our health, safety of, you know, the city. And personally, I don't think that it's very good for the, you know, economic development of having people drive around and seeing just overflowing garbage cans. So how do you balance, in legislative language, between, you know, the people who are trying and the people who don't try at all and don't give an opportunity for the people who are, you know, who live in the house, whether it's the homeowner or the other person, or renter, or their brother, to do the right thing and have a safe and healthy clean, because otherwise, we've had instances in our neighborhood of people who just had farts and they had them just kind of out there and they put things in, and they had rats, and we had, you know, and so it's a health and safety issue. So we're trying to balance it here and also looking at administrative of it, the administrative process of it, making sure, the waivers, nobody seemed very happy with that last week. So this is trying to do that. If people don't like it, I just, we'll do something.
And we have a litter control officer who does an excellent job of going up and knocking on doors and trying to get people to do what they need to do. This is above and beyond. This ordinance has something to do with where it is placed. But in terms of, you know, picking up your yard or putting your trash can away if it's been sitting there two days or whatever, I mean, I think our litter control officer is doing an excellent job of that.
But...
But he can't legislate, he can't do anything with this because of the way the old ordinance was written.
But with the new...
But with the new ordinance, yeah.
Yes. He can step in and say, yeah, we need to screen theirs.
Right.
Also, go ahead.
I have two issues with the way this currently reads. My biggest issue first, which is the fact that allowing the waiver for an individual living with a disability, I understand that our trash haulers will, upon request, go and grab the trash cans from wherever they are and bring them out, and that's great. However, with all respect for individuals living with disabilities, a lot of them enjoy the independence, self-esteem of being able to provide and take care of themselves, and therefore even to the little things that myself and most of us, as being able-bodied, temporarily able-bodied individuals, you are able to take your own trash out, you don't have someone come and take it for you. So that said, I really believe that that one clause, if not the other, which was the elderly, should be reinstated into this, because I think it gives individuals living with disabilities the option to, you know, be independent or to have someone, a trash hauler, haul it for them. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is, I know that originally we had said that this ordinance was not going to come into effect until January 1 of 2015, and now we're asking some of the residents if they choose to build a privacy fence or a stockade fence or something like that in the winter months around this to become compliant. So my thoughts are giving a little more lead-in time to make those changes possible to the point where now we are talking about a construction element in here which may require giving the citizens of Athens, you know, maybe until the 1st of February, but we're talking in the winter, that they're sitting there trying to pour concrete and put up a fence or something like that, which, that's fine, but just keep that in mind that when this goes into effect, if you haven't afforded citizens of Athens time to build a privacy screen of some type around it, I think that's a misstep.
Ken? I just have a couple of questions and clarifications. So in rereading the original legislation where it acknowledged behind the front edge of the house, which seemed to be working for the majority of Athens, so I think the majority of Athens was in compliance, if I'm correct. We have a few neighborhoods where we're not in compliance, and my understanding from listening to the code director is that those are being addressed and cited. So I'm confused, I guess, by our, I'm all for keeping Athens clean, I get that, but I guess I'm confused by our intent to completely rewrite and rework the legislation when the majority of Athens was in compliance. So I guess that's where I'm confused. Because I do agree that we do have a few areas that continuously seem to be problematic, but I would like to see us continue to address those areas or be heavy with our new fine system rather than rewrite the complete legislation that we're asking the whole city to deal with. That's what I'm confused by.
So as I understood it, is they were having difficulty with citing, we had these continuing properties, and the way I learned it, or understood it from the code director, is that they were in compliance. So even though it was visible or there was some other, maybe, topographical issue going on, they weren't, continued to be a problem. I mean, you drive by, there's property after property that's sitting there, and that, even though they were up against the porch or at the side of the house or whatever, they were clearly visible, and there are obviously times when it's overflowing or whatever. So to me, I think by adding the screening and basically making it very clear what we're looking for is, we do not want to drive down a street and see a trash can. That's the way this reads. So if you're in a situation, so to me, from a code director point of view, that's very clear in terms of how to make that determination. And that was what I was getting at when we met for the nine months in the code meeting, and we talked about that. Jeff, maybe you can help me here, but that was, no, you can't. That was clearly one of the issues that we were having difficulty with, is this was continuing to be an issue, we continued to see this, well, we can't cite that because it is right at the edge of the house, but clearly in view of everyone. So I think this language tightens that up to help the code department do their job, which is, I think the values and what this community is asking for is to drive down the street, we all know we have trash, we all know it's there somewhere, we just don't want to see it. We don't want to see the can. We all know that, and some people are able to figure that out better than others, but there are these situations. So, you know, we're saying, screen it, do whatever you need to make that fit with Athens, Ohio. And when you look at other communities and look at their ordinances and look at what they put up, it's clearly, we're not the only community asking for this to happen. I mean, this is what most communities have in their ordinances when it comes to trash, placement, trash storage, whatever word you want to put on that. So that was my understanding. Ken?
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from council members? Citizens? The mayor?
Oh, yeah. The code director did not seek this change. We all sat through the Code Ahoc, you know, committee enacted by council. Actually, I'm a little bit confused and dismayed on why those endeavors, which were to go forward towards the uniform trash cans and uniform recycling with the hopes that we get a single stream for our recyclables, would occur. I was unable to attend the last council committee meeting, but the code directors clearly identified that there's 30 to 40 percent of the citizens of the city of Athens, their trash cans are in view. Now you're, even though they're not a problem, they're not a problem. If you drive down these residential streets, you won't see that. I have to agree, right now, the tools they have, I believe they have enough in their toolbox in terms of if it's unsightly, if it's overflowing, and I know you disagree, I'm just stating what, you know, the perspective that I have in terms of being charged with the oversight of the code office, as it were. So, you know, again, you're enacting legislation that affects every resident, every homeowner, every, you know, residents in this city. Where there is not a problem that exists today. I also want to ask about how does this affect our zoning code? How does it affect lot coverage? How does it affect if we're having, you know, everybody has to run out and get some sort of fencing or screening? When I say every, 30 to 40 percent, that's a pretty significant portion of the population where they don't have a problem that exists today, and it's not viewed in that sense.
I don't know if I, okay, one thing is that a lot of times council is, you know, people say, well, you're only doing things that affect the renters, affect the students. And the fact that down my street, when I drive down, there are, yeah, I have to figure out how to fence mine, you know, I think that that's fair. It's just, it's not just because of the landlords, it's not just because of the rentals. We all have to look at this, and yeah, there may be a lot of people, but you know, a lot of those people who have them right next to the side of the house, you know, it's just, not every time, not everybody keeps it clean. They also, you know, have, you know, animals going through them, and so they get all ratty. You know, I think that this has come up multiple times, and we have tried to, you know, write legislation that gives good direction as opposed to having it be so amorphous that not everybody knows what's going on. And we can make a huge deal about it, about what kind of fencing and such, but you drive down most of them, and it is, it's not like, you know, building the ark all over again. You know, we're not talking about humongous structures, you know. I just think that I'm, and if the wording isn't what people see, then, you know, I'll go back and try to reword it to make the happy between, you know, administration and the legislature of trying to find that happy spot, so. And I just, that obviously, we have heard about garbage for a long time, and we can sit here and wait for the single stream to come along. However, having one garbage can through the city is not necessarily going to address the issue that if that one garbage can is always sitting out in the front yard, that's neither here nor there. I mean, it would be, I guess you could, we can make them camouflage or something. But, you know, this is an issue that's come up repeatedly to members of council, and so, you know, we can go and try to reword it and do word magic on it, but...
I also want to clarify that the fines currently as written and what is in practice today are indeed given to the residents via the utility bills. We all understand what that means. It will indeed, you know, be on whoever's occupying and responsible ultimately for that utility bill, and...
Okay, so writing an ordinance where the majority of the people actually follow the rules, 62 percent, okay. I would probably want to check and see how we add these little sheds for garbage, because I think there's probably a permitting system out there as an accessory structure. I'm not sure if accessory structures can be actually built in a front setback. I'm pretty sure fences can't be filled in a front setback, although I'd have to question somebody who's probably more familiar with the zoning board of appeals than I am in terms of what you can and cannot build in a front setback for screening these garbage cans. You're trying to change two different variables, or three different variables at the same time: out of sight, no waivers, and increasing the fines. I would submit just increasing the fines would probably shift a lot of this towards a certain direction.
Well, the thing is, is that we're really not increasing the fines very much. It goes from $20 to $50. I mean...
So when you go to dinner, $20 to $50 is not a change, a significant change?
I know people who've actually said to me, oh, well, you, you know, Kitty, when's the city gay come and clean it up? I'll pay my $20 fee. You know, I mean, okay, we can take it piece by piece and, you know, put forward a, you know, fine increase, see whether it helps to resolve the problems, maybe talking about it like we have been. You know, I'm, you know, I volunteered to try to craft language from people who seem to be having a frustrating time the last few times of crafting language, and...
And I can add this too, please, real quick, and I know, I know we do have a member in the community, Ms. Krenansky, who'd like to speak. I'll just add this really quick. I do appreciate the language that's in here, and I do appreciate Member Pappy acknowledging that this is an issue, and I'm not patronizing people when I say that, because I do believe we have a few streets in this community that continuously seem to be problematic. And I would like to see us address those few streets rather than knowing that the rest of the community, like the mayor alluded to, 60 percent of the community is in compliance. So that's the issue I have or concern, is I agree that we do have a few streets that continuously seem to be problematic and are riddled with garbage problems, and I would like us to address those streets.
But if the streets are within compliance of the old ordinance, how do you address the streets? That's what we're coming down to. And, you know, you can't spot, you can't spot zone. You can't say, ooh, these streets...
Correct.
...you have to do screening and such, and these other streets, you can't. You know, that, it's unfortunate, you know, it's kind of like...
I don't know who was on council when this was originally put forward by Nancy Bane in whatever year that was. Maybe Debbie, you remember? And I think that the conversation then was exactly almost what we're talking about today. And so, we, they formulated the language that has been used for the last 15 years or however long it's been, and we are still finding ourselves with an issue, whether there have been properties that have turned over and become rentals that were owner-occupied. I'm not sure what the issue is, but I think it's more than two streets. And when you have a community with 78 percent rentals, as we do, and the turnover that we have, I just think if you move into a property and there is a place where you know where to put the trash that's out of view, you'll probably do that. But we have situations that are not that way. It's very amorphous. I mean, it's changing, they don't know.
Right.
You know, and, so...
Ms. Krenansky, West Side Neighborhood Association Beautification Committee. I'd like to say a few nice things before I say a few bad things. I think that the way Councilmember Fall reworded this ordinance would be more than sufficient to appease our beautification committee from the West Side Neighborhood Association. I was very impressed. I personally talked to the trash coordinator in Morgantown, West Virginia today about our very situation and their situation, and I have some information that I'll probably share with Councilmember Falls and Pappy from them, and they were very impressed with what we were doing. They worked hard on this, presented their stuff to their legislation after they did a study, and pretty much got to what we're seeing coming out of this committee. So history, I think, is really important. Councilmember Pappy brought this up. When Councilmember Bane initiated out of sight, and it was, an attempt was made by the code office to enforce that, I was one of the people they picked on, I moved my trash can, right, out of sight, okay, I'll move it. I did, not that it was very obvious, but I cut down a tree and then you could see it and I didn't think about it, and so I did it. And what I'd like to say about speaking directly to Service Safety Director about now there's like so few people that have it... Director about now there's like so few people that have it out of sight, well, that was because it was not enforced. Instead, what was put into the language of the code, Code Administrator Paskey came to our neighborhood association meeting and told us that in the code was put behind the front edge of the house. If I'm not mistaken, that was an administrative insert, not a legislative insert. So, in real terms, we shouldn't even be here trying to make that change. Am I wrong? Does anybody know?
The code from two thousand and five, Code Book 50203, all solid waste containers should be kept out of view from the front, from the street, behind the front edge of the house.
Okay, that was what the code that Nancy Bane put into effect?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that's how the law read it.
That is how the law read, not as he told us at our neighborhood meeting that that was inserted because he couldn't enforce behind the house, although he was going around intending to enforce it. Well, then let me shoot you another thing, and this is going to the mayor. When you ran for your first election as, in your first campaign for mayor, one of the very issues you ran on was, "Let's get the trash out of you," and I'm holding you to that, and I'm holding your staff to that. Because we have worked on this, as it's been said by several council members, for, what are we talking, a decade? I don't know.
Yep.
And I think that if Councilmember Butler will walk around the First Ward, there are more than a few streets. Until a year and a half ago, I was a member of the First Ward, and actually, I still belong to the Neighborhood Association. It is part of the First Ward, and I walk around there a lot, and I know a lot of people that live there. And there is a lot of overflowing trash. And how do you define, and this is the tricky part, front edge of the house? So, it is the steps to the front porch? Is it the side of the porch? Is it the little extension that shoots up on the right-hand side of the house, and so you can put it right next to that, because, but then it's still right in the front? All of these scenarios are, cannot be pinpointed. And so, what Councilmember Falls has put together is specific, and people are going to have to suck it up. I mean, if you live in an alleyway, it's been so convenient to have your trash cans back there, you think nobody can see them. Well, now you're going to have to put them in the garage, or, or put a barrier up Lowe's, and probably C and E, just so I don't slight anybody. You, they had them on sale. They must have known we were going to do this. Covers, they're white plastic things, right? And so, when I was walking here, I was on High Street, and I'm not sure whose property this is. I think I know, but I don't want to say, because I'm not sure. I noticed that they had put up wooden boards right in front of their trash cans. So, it wasn't, it wasn't anything. It wasn't, it wasn't a new structure. It wasn't, it wasn't anything that would have to go to code because as, I mean, obviously, if the cans can't be there, then the boards can't be there. I don't know. And so, people are already preparing for this. I noticed a couple of houses that the trash cans are no longer on the side of the house. They're out of view. So, I think this is a positive thing. I think this is something that needs to go forward. And I think that I'm finished. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, so, shall we bring this up for first reading next week, council members?
I'd go for it.
As a member of the committee?
I mean, I think that we need to bring it up and do it or not do it, because we've spent weeks and weeks and weeks on this. And if we don't have consensus, then...
Then we don't.
Then we don't. And the, the one thing, the other thing that's part of this same code, this chapter five, which gets to what Paula was saying, is that, and something that one of our constituents has talked about over and over and over. It defines a container as something that's thirty gallons, which is woefully out of, out of date, and all our fees are out of date. And so, that's something, you can't buy a thirty gallon garbage can anymore unless you buy a six gallon tiny baby garbage can. Right now, there are big thirty-two. I went to Lowe's and looked at the garbage cans. There's thirty-two, and thirty-five, and fifty, and sixty-five, and ninety-five. So, we need to look at that definition, and I would probably nix it out, because the wheeled garbage cans that are ninety-five pounds, or ninety-five gallons, may be the easiest thing for people to be able to screen. You know, one garbage can, that's big enough, that's easy to be screened as opposed to seven thirty gallon garbage cans might be the way to go. So, I would just put the definition without any gallonage. And then we'll have to look at the fees, but that's something that's not even in this. It's in the fee structure. So, that, you know, we can wait on that until we know whether there's a single stream. And hopefully, a single stream would help ease a lot of this. Right now, there's all sorts of, you know, garbage cans out there, so...
Let me say, I would, I would recommend that we wait to see how the single stream is going to evolve and the possibility of our standardization of cans.
Before we redefine...
Before we redefine, because the definition would, might then be completely obsolete.
Right. Okay. So, Chris?
I have one question to ask, based on Councilmember Patterson's comments about people living with disabilities. And I realize that the way the waiver language was written in our original document made it difficult in the eyes of the law director's office to write it in that way. I'd just like to request if we could...
Figure out a way.
Yeah, figure out a way to add some language in. Maybe it isn't a waiver. I, I don't know, but some, some way that makes it doable, enforceable for the code office, livable for the law director's office in acknowledging the disability issue.
I mean, I can look at the legal, so...
Thank you.
Okay. I just love learning about garbage cans.
Did you have anything else?
The mayor.
I'm sorry. Mayor Wile?
As it stands now, I'll try, try veto this, okay? It's not that I have a problem with the fines. It's how it, the lack of discretion that's been taken, removed at this point. I'll also instruct my Service Safety Director, in one week, you have one week, to start enforcing all this. If it's in front of the setback, if you can see it from the street, I want code to violate it. If it's over thirty-two gallons, thirty gallons, I want it violated. Is that okay?
That's quite an adjustment from what's occurring right now.
Yes, it is. We have one week to learn, and we'll have low fines for that. So, that will make it much easier. So, if there's any problem, let me know. But at this point, we may as well enforce the law without discretion. After all, if we can't be, if we have to be robots, we can be robots. Thank you. And as I said, unless it changes, it's going to be vetoed, and the fines are going to go out.
Well, what, how do you want it, I mean, how do you want it changed? I'm not understanding where...
What would be non-vetoable?
Yeah.
Let me think about it. We have one week to think about it, and then everything, the hammer comes down. How's that sound? Okay?
Fine, yeah.
Good. Any other discussion for this?
Well, I, I would rather have a, you know, kind of discussion as opposed to, you know...
Well, it's only going to be twenty dollars the first time. What's the problem? Nothing.
Yeah, but as it stands now, how do you know it's in the, in the front of the house and what the view is? This is, gets right back to where we have...
I would need to explore what the requirements are for putting a structure in front setback. I would need to explore what, putting a fence, and the height of a fence. I don't think a fence can be like over a twenty, I don't know. What's the code? Say twenty inches to be in the front setback? So, therefore, everybody would need a variance to put that shielding of that thirty-two gallon or thirty gallon garbage can. So, they'd have to go get a variance for that.
And that's a, that's a legitimate discussion with this.
It is. And we're not doing it, are we?
No, we're doing it now.
Okay.
But I don't think that, that threatening to go out and store...
I'm not threatening. I'm just following the law. As you say, what you want me to do, I shall do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry.
For that instruction. Thank you all for that instruction.
Okay. Chris? I have one other question, or it's a thought that just occurred to me as we have the discussion, and I'll just, not that it needs an answer at this moment, but I wonder if taking the phrase "or screened from view" does, might address the problem, because as different people explained it, and when you just say, "It's got to be stored out of view." So, just remove, removing the screen from view might address it. So, that's just a comment.
Well, the, the reason why screened from view was in there with "out of view," you know, or screened, was that it, it was trying to give more leeway to those houses that can't put it in the back, or put it to the side, that they can screen it, even though it has to be in front.
So, it could be in the Lowe's or C and E container?
Yeah, and, and we're trying to, to realize the, the topographical problems or something in town. I mean, we could just say, "Can't, out of view, period."
Okay.
You know, and there are other ordinances out there that says, one, it's either in the garage or out of view, period. You know, it doesn't give you any sort of leeway about whether you have a hill, or a cliff, or anything. So, we're, you know, and I, I can go back and, and, you know, rework the language, and I'm more than happy to do that. I'm just trying to, to hear everybody and, you know, part of the, you know, the planner in me is trying to get to that happy spot to try to make it enforceable, but fulfill what people in this town desire for their town to look like, and make it workable for the image, administration. So, you know, just shoot me ideas on, I'll...
So, how does the, thank you, how does the administration currently handle what Michelle Pappy, Member Pappy is referring to with the overflowing cans on the sides of the house? So, if they're in compliance with being outside, what, how's the word, beyond the...
Stored neatly, not overflowing.
Right, the old code says, "front edge of the house." So, if it's overflowing or problematic and erect, how's that?
That's a violation. That can be a violation now. Nothing changes that. Those can be called in. I would contend, and I, I can get these stats for you, that at most, we have a handful of trash or litter viola complaint issues in the entire South Side and in Fina, in the Far East Side. Now, I think it's adjusted some fairly concentrated areas, and I believe I heard you agreeing to that.
Yeah.
That there...
That we can't spot zone. I mean, that's the problem. I mean, I guess we could...
So, everybody, you know, that's what I'm saying. This impacts City Y, I feel, is quite the leap in terms, in terms of the screening and...
Well, how else would, that's where we come down. So, you have to write legislation to cover the bad apples.
And somebody has a corner of the lawn, like you said.
Right.
And it's not, they're not inviting rodents or varmints or anything like that. They're very good citizens, and they do their diligence and bring it around, you know, to their back. Now it's visible, and they have to take one additional measure. I just, you know, I'll provide the stats, at least in terms of where we get the, and I haven't had a call from any citizen in those two areas saying, "I have an issue," and that the city, you know, my area is trashy. It's pretty much a highly concentrated, largely predominantly student neighborhood, close to neighborhoods that seem to have...
Yeah, but we can't, we can't make an ordinance that says, "Ooh, only students." You know, it's every, everybody. My neighborhood, I already know places that will have to do things. And it's, and it's, even if the garbage is somewhat restricted by Wednesday night, it's still pretty overflowing and stuff, you know, and the garbage can, the five garbage cans that are next to the house, even though in, in like my neighborhood, which is not, you know, the, the student neighborhood, and I don't like, you know, pointing out that it's students, because students, I think, like Michelle said, if they had a designated place that says, "Garbage cans here," that were out of the way, and out, it would make everything better. They would look at, you know, people tend to treat houses better if there's not garbage overflowing. The garbage can is out of the way. It's like broken, as I say over and over, the broken windows concept. If you have places where, and you know that your landlord expects you and has a place that's there in the back of the house, or to, you know, behind a fence or something, then they, that's, you know. I just don't, we can't spot, we can't do spot ordinances. And so, we're trying to figure out a way of, of making the language to where it deals with these problem things, and it's not too onerous on the people who aren't, you know. And I'm one of those. My garbage is in the back of my house, but it's on Ondis, which is an avenue, you know, but it's like an alley. And I've already figured out how to probably do my little fence, you know, which involves growing vines and painting my garbage can the same color as my garage. You know, creativity, we can have creative garbage can award.
Okay.
So, but...
Okay.
I mean, I, I guess we have some more work on it, and, and I'll work on it and let people know.
Okay, so, are we not ready to bring this up next week, maybe? Another council, another committee meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I don't, I don't want...
And then, and then, basically, it takes...
I can talk about garbage more.
Takes six weeks for us to get an ordinance through, so it'll be a while before this goes into effect.
Trying to, you know, massage the wording.
Okay. Did you have anything else for planning and development?
I just had one miscellaneous. Next week, I'm going to bring an amendment, you know, bring forward something about the electrical aggregation. The eighty-seven fourteen, which was passed last week, there was some problems with the wording, so I would like to vote next week to rescind it and put in a different ordinance with different wording. Is that okay? Thank you.
Sure.
Mayor Wile has more explanation of why.
Well, essentially, the, the included reference to eighty-seven fourteen included the draft agreement for SOPEC, Southeast Ohio Public Engineering Council. What we've been doing is fine tuning it, and again, this is a learning curve. So, when you refer to that, we get pretty much stuck with that particular wording and that particular structure. The essence hasn't changed. I believe I gave you a packet which includes eighty-seven fourteen, some of the, the latest draft of the council agreement, SOPEC agreement, as well as the bylaws that are included that, that it refers to. I prefer, the bylaws, of course, would be changed by the SOPEC council in a future day, not the city council. So, if you, you've put them into there as a reference, we'll be stuck going to, every time we have a modification of it. The same thing with this...
It makes it for a cleaner legislation.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, that will be...
And part of the dialogue I had today was, I was thinking, "Well, the, the structure and the essence hasn't changed that much." But the fact is that if we ever have to play hardball with an engine company, and they look and say, "Well, wait a second, you, you know, this, this particular document does not reflect that particular document." I think that the term was suspenders and belt...
Belt and suspenders.
Belt and suspenders approach, because if we ever have to do, play negotiation, it might come in and hamstring us at a later date.
So, I will bring that, and will be, it will come up under suspension of the rules too. So, so we'll have to rescinding, we don't get to rescind ordinances very often.
Ooh.
And then we'll have this other one. So, it's a substitution, I guess, would be the only. So, that's all my miscellaneous.
I'm sorry, Member Paul, I had, I had just had one miscellaneous. This is regarding the Essence of Athens, which we were, most of us, I think all of us were witness to with the planners, city planners' public presentation, and a number of us have discussed the possibility of bringing forward a one-reading resolution from council to embrace and welcome the Essence of Athens as something that we would like to see implemented. So, that's under discussion, and the wherethes and communications that are happening with people in that regard.
Okay.
Anyone else want to comment on that, or...
So, is that likely to be here next week?
I'm not positive.
But it's coming.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this is something that I've also, along with Member Butler, been in the conversations of having this come through. And I think what's really important for those, we were all there, one of the things that Kyle Isell, who's city planner Paul Logue's counterpart in getting this put through and doing a lot of the thinking and heavy lifting when it came to putting together Essence of Athens, is that he had mentioned that there is a lot of other cities throughout the state of Ohio that already have eyes on that particular document, not to mention what, what has been done down here, and kind of looking at us as a, a template, the essence is a template for their own communities and municipalities. So, therefore, again, I think that this resolution is, is highly important, because it's showing our support among, with something that is part of us. This is Athens. I think this is good when we bring it forward.
I would just add, it's a very positive, you know, it's such a positive thing. Many times, we're down here in the weeds like we were with our earlier... Many times we're down here in the weeds like we were with our earlier conversation, and, you know, this is such a positive document and a way to look at pulling all the, the parts of Athens together. So just as, you know, just a really positive thing that's happened for, for our city.
I agree. Thank you. Okay. Member Pappy, Transportation Committee, very positive take on this, please.
Allowing continuous parking in the same location for several weeks. Um, as we know that generally you have to move your vehicle every 24 hours and during these periods of time, like over the holidays, um, we suspend, um, continuous parking in the same location. And this year, and I'm glad our city service director is here, because I think we also have the issue of the parking garage to deal with, but, um, we, um, are looking at Monday, December fifteenth until midnight on Friday, January second, uh, for this suspension. Um, so.
Would the suspension be for Court Street or for the parking garage?
Well, is, is the citywide?
Parking garage. Um, I'm sorry, the suspension.
The continuous parking is citywide.
That's what my for our rule.
Right. That's citywide, right.
The parking garage is what, where we have landed the last few years on the, allowing the free parking in order to come uptown and grace merchants and shop.
And that kind of thing. And so do we have the dates for that yet, for the ordinance? I don't think, I think it's a separate ordinance, correct?
I think, I, I believe they can be combined.
Just a simple.
It was just mentioned that we did not see in the draft the suspension of the 24-hour parking. Do they normally, do you remember Debbie?
It says suspending Athens City Code.
Separate.
They use a separate. And I thought the other one actually started around Thanksgiving, so it was later in November.
We've changed it because of the semester system.
Okay. That works.
Unless council has a different.
Well, isn't, hasn't that usually been suspended for the downtown merchants and to encourage people to come to downtown activities?
It has, but in the past, the greater student population indeed leaves at Thanksgiving and does not come back. This would have an overlap of about two weeks.
Okay, is there any discussion on this? Does anybody, I think we just need to tweak our language here a little bit. So is there any conversation regarding the businesses, what do you want to do at the fifteenth, or do you want to back it up for the Christmas shopping season? I understand that, you know, people do park there all day. It's a very busy parking garage when, when OU is in session.
Essentially, the, in the parking garage, meters are bagged for saying two hour holiday parking. Should prevent storage parking in terms of just coming up here and sitting? So, um, and I, we haven't, I haven't had the discussion with A U about to determine what they're, how they would feel in terms of uptown business, if they would want those additional weeks, but we can reach out through the chamber and get some answers. It is not to be used as storage parking. It's suspended in order for, as opposed to, you can park right in front if there's an open meter and pay your quarters, or you can park for free there for two hours while you shop in that, in the uptown area, so.
The two hours are for the first couple of levels, then?
Mm-hmm.
So what about the upper levels? Free forever? Free for, just asking.
Right. Free for several weeks.
Right. Weeks. If you'd like, I can get, I can get back with the captain of the police department who's actually charged with overseeing parking enforcement and get some best practice.
So if you can get back to me this week, then hopefully we can get the language, this Debbie worked out, and then we can bring it forward next week, because I think we need to bring this forward next week.
Correct. Well, at your next regular.
At our next regular.
Are you having a special session?
Two weeks.
No, we're not.
Sounds very definitive.
So October 2nd gives us some time.
Six.
Six, sorry. Gives us some time.
I can get this resolved, get you, uh, answers and you can share amongst council members and.
All right. Any other questions here on this? All right.
Okay.
And I, any miscellaneous? I don't have any. Miscellaneous Paula?
Changes to the Halloween party?
Go, if it's under, go ahead.
I think that's under transportation or is it?
Well, the vending, I don't know.
Um, that I, I disposed from Mr. Passby. Uh, I guess there were a couple of things going on. One is that the kind of safe, safe Halloween party, uh, committee.
Committee.
Party, safe Halloween committee, uh, was talking about some of the ban issues in terms of the ones that kind of sprout up, I believe, and how to distinguish one from the other, whether it's legitimate or not. The other section, I think, was just changing the vending structure, and I think you've already passed that, so you'd have to revisit it, I think, right? Okay, so.
I mean, it can come up under service safety. Okay.
Well, maybe we should discuss, though, a little, yeah, you're coming up with service safety work. Sounds good.
Oh, no.
Transportation.
Transportation.
Okay.
We indeed had our contract signed pre-construction during Shelley and Sands regarding Richland South project. Um, Richland South, they have elected because the utility work is still being conducted, has not been cleared out yet, that they're, they're going to begin soon as they can when the weather breaks, end of February 1st of March. In a lot of ways, that's good. This allows us to get these utility conflicts that everybody is dealing with on a daily basis completely ended and done with. We do plan on re, having the asphalt patching in place to hold it through the winter.
Okay.
And we're going, you know, we'll abide by that. And the contractor is well-respected by the city of Athens, Shelley and Sands. They are award-winning contractors for our roundabout, award-winning for our Oxbow Bridge, and now they've also been awarded this contract for Richland South, so.
Which would run from Ohio University Inn?
Dairy Lane down to Canterbury.
From Dairy Lane down to Canterbury.
Right now, the construction that's being done, of course, is the A P on the poles, Columbia Gas, and then A P has another substation they have to play with by University.
And then the subs that are, like the Time Warner and Frontier are coming in after that. So this will allow it to all be cleared out and then for them to start. They have a very aggressive construction schedule that they provided that looks like they hope to be completed near the end of August, if they're able to start, so that would be.
So Paula, um, thank you for bringing that up, because I think people don't really understand what's underneath our street. And for each contractor, they each have to come in and do their piece and do their part, and they also have to be communicating with the other. You know, some days you'll see four or five different contractors standing there looking down the hole, trying to, you know, because they don't know where all those utilities. So again, I think by taking the time and doing what we need, when there are issues in the future, hopefully everybody will know where everything is down there, too, which hasn't always been the case with our infrastructure, um, in this old city. So, um, I, I know patients, we're asking the public for patience, but it also sounds like Richland will be somewhat smoother, smoothed over, over the winter months, we hope, um, to just get us through till the major paving and widening and.
And hopefully the traveling public has seen, uh, recognized there's been at least some minor improvements in those traveling lanes now in terms of the cuts instead of being left in the concrete with the gravel and then there are.
I think, yeah.
Okay. So congratulations on a contract.
Yes. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
No? Okay, um, member Nysley, Finance and Personnel, perimeter lighting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we have some positive news for the uptown area. Um, in the past, we've had perimeter lights around the outlined structure of the buildings and Court Street, primarily that down the uptown area, and these lights have aged and the wiring for them has aged. And as I understand, uh, kind of a joint venture of the city, Ohio University and the Uptown Business Association have been working to collect money and also to obtain a, a quote from an electric company for replacement of the wiring and the lights. Uh, we do have a, a quote for that, and, uh, as I understand, the total is forty, forty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, uh, for the city lights project and then also hardware of fifty-five hundred. So approximately forty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars is the, um, information that we have right now on the cost for replacement of the lights and the wiring. Uh, we have received contributions, that's been confirmed by, uh, the auditor's office, that we have forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars received, twenty thousand of that from Ohio University, and then twenty-eight thousand from, uh, the business, businesses in the uptown association. The thought is, is that the, uh, city then would bear the, um, if there is a contingency, if there would be some overage over the estimate that we have, that the city would be paying that. Um, as I understand, well, part of what will happen with this new system is to hope that the city will have a switching mechanism so that we'd be able to control that by a computer, uh, for turning that on and off. Uh, so this quote brings the cost to twelve dollars and twenty cents per linear foot. And we're bringing it before council because it's a, a pass-through of the monies. The monies have come into the, the city funds, and then we have the quote for the cost of replacing it, and we'll probably be overseeing that, uh, the replacement, and then paying the cost out. So we'll need legislation to authorize us to spend the money on that.
Do we have a timeframe?
Uh, I, I think we're hoping that if it could suspend and be passed, uh, given the fact of trying to get the construction done before the weather turns cold, that maybe we might be able to get it in before the, before the holidays or by the holidays.
Okay, good.
Yes, council member Reisner?
How much then would the city be liable for if the difference, two thousand dollars, that?
I thought we were going, going for five now?
Yeah, up to five thousand, five thousand dollars contingency.
Okay.
At this point, it looks like the math, we have the money to cover pretty much all the costs.
Right.
So I have two questions.
Yes.
Are they LEDs? And then, uh, who pays the electric bill?
The property owners, that was part of the discussion at the Finance Personnel Committee.
And yes, they are LED.
Meeting.
So they know how, it's, it's phased to each building and then?
It'll be plugged into each building and part of their meter system, if I understand correctly. Um, again, it's actually, they did most of the work, A U did mostly the, the arm twisting, get everybody involved. Ohio University gave a lion's share as well. Uh, our component, of course, will be to cover the army in some of our buildings, of course. So the intention is to, you know, to get it done, we, usually this happens around November, they start talking about perimeter lighting. So they've been discussing this for a good six or eight months now, so they're ahead of the curve. Um, it, again, you need to appropriate the money, accept the money, appropriate it, and then get it moving if possible.
Yeah, I, I believe the twenty thousand was given almost a year ago. It's been a while that they've had that from Ohio.
Uh, June, well, I've got a June 3rd invoice for this year, but it's probably been in the works for some time.
Yeah.
Thanks to the Business Association and the businesses uptown and Ohio University for helping make this happen.
And yes to the LED.
Yeah.
Of course.
And, uh, I think the maintenance will fall on the property owners, too. And again, there was discussion about remote, turning it off and unremotely, so.
I only ask those questions because, of course, this is the second round for these lights. They were there once before, and, and I'm not sure why it all fell apart in the past when there was that breakdown, you know, if there, if these agreements weren't in place, you know, I don't know what, 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 what the reasoning was, because it used to be, you know, twenty years ago or fifteen, you know, all the lights were working and it was beautiful, and then over time, they just kind of wore out and the wiring broke down and.
But also, the cost of actually light replacement could get pretty high, too. I mean, if you have to hire a boom truck every time there's a bulb, like, it could get expensive. Um, some of the issues I brought up, of course, is maintenance of, of the, you know, the gutters and the eaves. Uh, the assumption is that that would be part of the package as well, that property owners will deal with that along the way. Uh, and again, a, a lot of the work was done by, uh, Mr. Warden and, uh, Guy Phillips, I believe. So they, you know, they deserve the credit at this point.
Good. Anything else for Finance and Personnel?
Um, let's see. You were talking about trying to increase the rental permits, of course. I think that was part of the conversation. Uh, let's see.
He was going to cover that under city.
Okay, yeah, okay. The other one is, um, I may need some money for demolition of a, a condemned house. I'm trying to look and see where I can get the money from, but at this point, probably out of Athens enhancement to the two fifty, if I'm right. Um, and I say that because we've, this has been a process going on for a while. Uh, the property owner has a certain amount of time to actually do it themselves. We're hoping they will do it so we don't have to foot the bill. It'll be about fifteen thousand dollars. We go on the tax rolls and we'd collect it whenever it rolls over.
Do we get the land?
No.
No.
No, just have to lean on it, along with the rest of, you know, taxes. I think that's all I have to find is personnel. Okay.
That it? Okay. Um, member Patterson, um, City and Safety Services Committee have several things to talk about.
The first thing has to do, and it was mentioned a minute ago, has to do with increasing the rental permit fees. Rental permit fees in Athens haven't changed since two thousand and five. Um, that said, I want to give a little bit of background on at least some numbers in terms of historical numbers for Athens. Again, as a lot of you are aware, our population is about twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two people, of which we have six thousand, nine hundred and three houses in the city of Athens. Um, of those, five thousand, one hundred and eight are rental units. A lot of you are probably aware that seventy-four percent of the housing stock in the city of Athens are rentals. Our density per square mile is two thousand, four hundred and twenty-four people, and the last bit of information I think is pertinent with all of this is the fact that, uh, you know, sixty-seven percent of our homes are eighteen to twenty-three years of age, so that we have some aging homes out there. That said, again, with the population, uh, and the number of houses and the number of rentals, and the fact that this hasn't changed in almost ten years, um, it'll be a significant revision of section twenty-nine point oh-three, point oh-four, which is the rental permit fee section, to where, um, a lot of the fees are going to be going up by either five or ten dollars. So they aren't significant fee adjustments, but, uh, they do fit with, with, uh, changes of inflation and so on and so forth. And the amount of work that goes into inspecting, um, these, the rental units throughout the town. Uh, one other change that's going to go in there is the late fees for getting your rental permit, uh, which has, again, been standing at twenty-five dollars for ten years plus, and that's going to go up to thirty dollars. So again, these aren't, these aren't huge increases, they're, they're increases that'll cover the cost of going and, uh, permitting these homes. Question?
In the past, we have run up against the vice code limits, the wimpy limits that the O R C has, and we need to make sure that we're not bumping up against those, you know?
In what sense?
Well, you know, the administrative fee that we had for the nuisance party, we wanted two hundred and fifty dollars, but the O R C only allowed us a hundred and fifty dollars. So there's maybe, um, certain O R C legislation that covers this sort of thing.
Late fees?
Yeah, that is probably in the O R C about when, top amounts of rental fees. Just, let's just get it up front and make sure that it's not, you know, that we don't. Um, also, I would, I would question, um, if it's, whether it matches the rate of inflation since we have a, you know, if, it's painful to, to raise fees, but if it hasn't been raised for so long and the rate of inflation, um, hasn't, if it's not covering the rate of inflation from two thousand and five, then I would question whether we need to raise it a bit more, and whether we want to raise it enough to maybe hire another person in the, um, code office, you know? The code office has a lot of work and with all the garbage can inspection, so I just, you know, I just want to make sure, because we don't want to keep coming back to this sort of, so.
Yes, sir.
Uh, one of the things we, the shop, the counselor. One of the things we've, the shop, Councilor Pappy and I discovered when on the ad hoc committee was that the rental fee structures are, are different than, say, a, a single dwelling home with, renting a room, and a very large student complex with thousands of students up there. In fact, they get quite a discount because of their volume. I think their fee is like fifty dollars, fifty-five dollars.
Fifty-five dollars.
Okay, whereas a ordinary privately owned home is like, what, ninety?
At this point, it's what? At this point, it's per rental fee permits, there's per unit, owner occupied, unit keeping renters, it's ninety dollars, okay? For, per unit, of ten units, over ten units in one building is fifty-five. For over ten units in more than one building at one location, seventy-five.
Per unit.
Per unit.
Per unit.
The idea is that if you, probably if you've seen one, you've seen them all, but the fact is that once you have a pad and you can go in and say, okay, that's a, that's a working, you know, smoke detector, this is a working sink, and therefore, they're all pretty much cookie cutter at that point.
Well, what, one of our recommendations, if I remember our report right, is that we recommend it across the board, ten dollars rather than five or ten, just flat ten bucks, raise it up for everybody.
Well, let me read to you what it is, unless you have it there in front of you, for the changes. The changes would be, in essence, it would be changed from ninety dollars to one-hundred dollars per unit for up to ten units in one building. Fifty-five will go to sixty per unit over ten units in one building, so that these are all going up, again, incrementally.
Right, right. It's just that it seems to me that the, the highest fee that we're tacking on goes to the person who is actually earning the least from their rental.
I'll have to get clarification for you on that, because I don't believe that, that is the case. And this did come out of the ad hoc committee that we were participating in.
And of course, the idea is, there will be funding there that will go to the code office so that they can then hire additional help in the way that the code office believes is necessary to make their, their office and their functions, you know, better, whether that be another inspector or another office personnel or someone, but...
Which is what John is asking for, more, the office personnel, but he's estimating, set around forty-two, he says actually, when he ran the numbers closer to forty-five thousand dollars annually, that would be an increased revenue. But if we maybe just be mindful of maybe revisiting fees and permits, say, every five years instead of allowing, you know, ten years to pass and that habit as opposed to a significant increase at this time.
Can that be written into the ordinance that way, to be reviewed in?
Every...
Every five year? No, that, there might be an issue. Okay.
Just as we were looking at other communities for garbage collection and, and have we looked at any other cities that are comparable in size to Athens and what kind of rental fees?
We did.
We did.
The influence from Max...
The ad hoc.
The ad hoc, yeah, okay, and use that as a basis to form these increases.
We looked at different ones, and some of our members on the ad hoc committee also looked through the numbers because they're, just by coincidence, just happened to rent, you know, do this sort of thing. We're right about where we should be.
In the middle.
If we kicked it up another ten bucks, would be right smack in the median. There are some communities, I think they've mentioned, like Oxford is more, some, some actually charge more, some less. But of course, it all depends upon the circumstances of the, of the city. Like you say, we have seventy-four percent rentals here, you know, that's, that's incredible. Other towns maybe only have ten or fifteen. So it's like comparing an apple to an orange, so we just have to make the best decision.
Mayor?
A couple of things. One is that I think the state average is about thirty-four percent rental, and this, last time I checked, in the state. You'd probably want to go back and check the census on that, so we're totally flipped when it comes down to... In terms of the rental, we just were thinking incremental, so it's not to take a shock to many of the landlords and property owners. In the past, when I got into office, we actually had, at one point, we had five code inspectors in addition to the lid control. At that time, they were doing their inspections once every two years. The calculation at that time by the Deputy Service Safety Director, I think, or was it Service Safety Director in the previous, was a calculation that they, they only required four and they could actually do it in twelve months. So we put them to that task. And part of it is a rearrangement of how the scheduling goes, they go about scheduling. We're not getting that twelve month, I think we're at a fifteen month cycle instead.
Fifteen to eighteen, depending upon what are the...
A lot of it has to do with the reinspection side of it. Essentially, if I understand the way it goes, if inspection occurs, if there's a violation or some problem, you have thirty days to correct it, and the next time you go in, it's actually freebie, we go in and do a reinspection. Subsequent to that, if it's not been fixed, then the next reinspection does cost you money. And that's where the time starts to stretch out. Now, if we wanted to add that fifth code officer back in, it would probably free up the time and make this either cycle increase, or they had better time to play with garbage. So these are the things to think about in terms of parameters. Again, all the fines and fees and permits, I think there was, in 2005, there was a study, basically a study looking in terms of what it costs to move that paper from point A to point B. That's where the cost was put together, that's why the, the number was generated at that time. If we raised any of these things, realize it does go into the general fund. The general fund is amorphous, fungible, is that the term, I think? But that just means whatever we decide to put into the code, you know, we, we build the budget to sort of reflect that, whatever we have in the general fund. Again, I think they're one of the smaller, you know, in terms of the cost, I think they're one of the small ones, I have it here someplace, but, you know, that would be something to look at, is increasing the number of code officers as the, as requested by code.
I would add one other thing, having sat on the Board of Zoning Appeals, that I think one of the other things you've done with your administration is the follow-up to the variance, that in the past, you granted a variance, but nobody really went back and checked whether or not the variance, they did the variance as was awarded to them at, at the time with the board. So I know that you all have spent more time using code officers to kind of follow up on if someone was granted a variance, did they follow the rules of what was voted on to give them that variance?
That was putting a time limit on both variances as well as building permits. There are some cases where somebody get a building permit and they wouldn't touch a board or a nail for twenty years.
Right. And somebody's got to follow up, which again, takes time, somebody has to go and research that and follow up. So another use of a code officer and their time.
Member Patterson, some vending issues?
Thank you, yes, just forward. I imagine this is something that we're going to have to suspend the rules on to, to get through, to make it in time for October 25th and October 26th. The first being a change to the vending ordinance itself, as you know, we passed an ordinance suspending the vending on Court Street so that vendors could vend within the Halloween party cordoned area. But in looking at the closer, one of the things that came to light is, is what are the vending fees for, say, local vending, local vendors, individuals who have and hold vending permits, either are A permits or are B permits, as well as individuals in the city who hold a vending permit and use it for at least four months a year, that the fees associated with those should be, there should be a scale. So anyway, with this ordinance, basically, what will be going forward is for type A permits, the fee to vend will be a hundred dollars for that special event. For those who currently hold solicitors or peddlers license for four months, they'll pay the special fee of two-hundred dollars. A three-hundred dollar fee will be for all other vendors who come in to vend for that particular event. One other element that's in here which needed to be clarified was, a lot of the vendors will use power in the city, up and down Court Street, that our power drops, and not all of them, but some of them, and that there's a fifty dollar fee associated with that. So that's different from, from former years. The other ordinance that'll come forward that we need to suspend as well is the issue of temporary signs in the downtown business though for Halloween. There'll be a cost of ten dollars to have a sign, the signs have to have the Halloween logo on it, on them, and the business to be sponsored for the event. The signs cannot exceed thirty percent of the building's surface area, can't obstruct emergency exit or access to the premises. And again, this is to kind of clean things up, because banners have been used in the past, that they were just kind of randomly put up all over the place, and, and so this is to at least have some way of monitoring these, the, the signs, the signage, making sure that they're compliant with, making it a safe Halloween.
Has, has the law director visited this?
Has not. I'll make sure that he has, or his office has. And the other statement would be that Athens Clean and Safe Halloween Committee and their sponsorships they receive for their stages, we are not charging them.
Right.
It's for other banners that may be put up on Court Street. Frankly, the code director had asked for this because...
Are they just homemade signs? I just don't remember the source of that.
So these hang out at the top of the buildings?
If somebody has one on a building, how he addresses it. But also, I, and maybe this language needs to be tweaked a little, the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee, and I get what they're saying, they go out and get sponsorships to assist in offsetting for the entertainment, so they need to be able to display on behalf of...
That they're supporters.
Yes.
Will this cover those wacky, wavy inflatable tubes?
Well, you know, I'm really sorry about that, and the mayor's been kind of angry with me on that issue, State Street. I approved one of those floaty little banner signs, because I viewed it as the same as a balloon, but I've had nothing but grief since purging that down, out there, so we'll be looking at signs as a whole. Some of us remember how painful it was to get through that to your process, but...
They could hire the mayor.
Yeah, really good imitation.
Just blow them up with hot air.
He didn't hear you. That's on...
Okay, so...
We'll have the law director review it and...
That would be important for us, so we're not frustrated.
Okay. This is also our attempt to work in community with the Athens Clean and Safe Halloween Committee, so...
Correct. Well, are these kind of like the Corona banners that people...
Could be, Four Loko is a major sponsor.
Right.
I'm not sure what that is. Sometimes I think it's a really spiky energy thing, sometimes maybe it's something else, so I don't...
And they all have fees.
Member Patterson?
Idea of one more thing, this, this won't come up on Monday, but I think it's important to mention it now as opposed to waiting until Monday. The J-PAC, the ordinance that we did pass on the J-PAC barbecue, which is going to be down in front of Baker Center, I just found out that there's going to be some construction going down, going on right on that site where it was going to happen, however, not to fear, the street closing was all the way from, was from President Street on South Court, all the way out to Park Place and University Terrace. So the south end of Court Street, there won't be any construction going on in there, it'll just move twenty feet further north, so...
And since you're not meeting Monday, I guess announcements would be that that is scheduled for Tuesday, September 30th?
It is Tuesday, thank you.
It's Monday.
The rain date of Wednesday.
And again, as you know, that's, that's a great community engagement event with both law enforcements, OUPD and Athens PD, and hopefully plenty of student engagement to make this happen, so this will be a great event.
We're all invited, right?
Everyone's invited, the whole community is invited. The whole community is invited, there will be free food, I should throw that out, but it'll be, is anybody serving the food? Is that...
Give us date and time again?
Date and time, the, the initial date will be September 30th, between six and eight o'clock, street closing is from five to nine. There is a rain date, which is October 1st, which is Wednesday, in case there is raining, and that's the same times, again, it'll be from six to eight P.M. I know that catering services at Ohio University will be serving some of the food, and Kaiser's Barbecue will be serving the other half of the food. So it'll be, it's a true mix of the university and the city and all community members. So please come, this is a big, big deal.
Are you bringing peppers?
I am bringing the peppers.
Oh, okay.
You've probably heard, running through council members, we do not have a council meeting next week, that'll be the fifth Monday, so our next council meeting will be Monday, October 6th. So we won't be meeting here next Monday. Yes?
And I also hadn't realized that we had no meeting next week, so I'd like to also make an announcement, since we won't be here next week, and that is that the Sustainability Commission will be hosting a public meeting to begin work on a sustainability plan for the city of Athens on October the 12th at six P.M. at the Athens Community Center, and all are welcome and invited to bring your ideas and input.
Mayor, why?
Since we're doing meetings, I believe the advisory commission's got a meeting, public hearing, is it October 1st in the evening?
There are two sessions.
Two sessions, one for the actual presentation, but that's, I thought, for the committee, and I thought a public input one later that day, October 1st, four to six maybe? I may be wrong on that.
We should get the information out.
Yeah, we'll get the, yeah.
But I believe it is the same day, yes.
Yeah, okay. I'll bring it up at my press conference Wednesday.
Okay. Anything else? Member Reisner?
Make a small public service announcement.
Please.
I just found out today that the ACTV, Athens Community Television, is having an open house this Thursday, seven P.M., I believe. I'm seeing my, there's guys in the back there more than I do, but they said there's free food and things down the old Morrison Schoolhouse on Resonant Avenue. Throw that out there.
Try to get that up on our website as well.
Okay.
Then we are adjourned at eight twenty-nine, pretty close to eight thirty.